Any second now. I will call this work session meeting to order of the San Marcos City Council. Today is Monday, July 3 of 2023. The time is 3 o'clock exactly. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mary Hewson.
Here.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
All right. And first off, is our citizen comment time period. The city council welcomes speakers at work sessions and regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak during citizen comment portion of a work session to speak in person would need to sign up at the city clerk's office prior to noon. And to speak online is to email citizen comment prior to 5 o'clock the day before. A call-in number and link will be provided. Is there somebody who's not on mute? I'm hearing an echo. Okay. Speakers may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak about a public hearing topic, we ask that you not repeat the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You have three minutes to speak. Once you state your name, a timer is displayed on the screen. You start in the green. And when you have 20 seconds left, the timer will only show yellow. And when the timer is red, your time to speak is up. Mayor and council endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. We have one speaker signed up, I believe. And I have that note somewhere. Oh, here it is. And we have Mr. Baker online, and I see that Mr. Baker is online. Mr. Baker, three minutes are yours.
Yeah. To start, I wanted to say a big thank you to all of my neighbors that came out to the inaugural Dunbar block party that we had on June 24 at the Eddie Durham Park. It was a huge success. We had about 100 people, a bunch of different vendors, some great live music, and of course, a little history lesson about the Dunbar neighborhood from the Dunbar Heritage Association, as well as partners with the Calaboose and the Seifus House. All of that was in great part organized and successful because of the help from city staff. So, thank you, Mr. Carr. Thank you, Mrs. Harris and Ms. Barrio. I really appreciated all of that. It was a fantastic way. And for anybody who is curious about hosting their own block party in their neighborhood, I would love to be a resource. I intend to go and speak with the Neighborhood Commission to encourage them to take advantage of those resources. And I know a lot of you city council folks are busy with a lot of stuff, but I would hope that you would consider throwing a block party in your neighborhood. There are a lot of rules and regulations that I think when you get involved with that, you'll see are, make it kind of difficult for people to navigate in those sectors. And maybe that's why we haven't seen as much utilization of the block party trailer as we would hope. But if any of y'all have any questions, or if anybody out there listening wants to contact me, my phone number is 512-393-4287. Once again, I would love to help your neighborhood have a block party and teach you what I've learned, having thrown my second one now, the first one in Real Vista, the second one here in Dunbar. The other thing not so friendly to talk about is your agenda for today here for the work session, talking about homelessness. I am shocked to read that you hired Mr. Robert Marbut? If you just like Wiki him, he has a terrible track record as a former Trump appointee and homelessness advocate in San Antonio. He did things like require drug tests and sobriety first. He says housing is a, housing fourth is his priority instead of housing first. And he discouraged nonprofits from providing food to these, to our homeless neighbors because it enables them, quote unquote. I think that's disgusting that you would take advice from somebody like this, especially considering the Texas State research suggested a housing-first policy, not a housing-fourth policy. I hope that today during your session, you ask the consultant about these claims and his past history and success. I think that would be important in monitoring, looking at the areas he's worked and whether he's had any notable impact. And to make sure that we also consider how the Martin v. Boise case works in conjunction in a city like San Marcos where we don't have enough housing resources and yet are criminalizing encampments which that case does illegal. Thank you.
Ms. Trevino, was anyone else signed up? All righty, then we will, that concludes our citizen comment time period. If you would read item one for us, please.
Yes, ma'am. I received a presentation, whole discussion on the final report on the homeless action plan by Dr. Robert Marbut.
Ms. Reyes.
So, before I get into the talking points for the first item, I want to take a little bit of time to introduce a new staff member to us, Griselle Perez-Carry. So, this afternoon, I'm pleased to welcome and introduce a new member of the city manager's office team, and it's Griselle Perez-Carry. She's the city's new diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator. Griselle has 11 years of experience in developing and implementing culturally competent practices, including tradings and engagement opportunities. She most recently served as the Assistant Director of the Follett Student Leadership Center at the University of Texas at Arlington, and served as the co-chair of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee in her division. Griselle is also familiar with the San Marcos community and previously worked for Texas State University, where she earned a Master of Education in Student Affairs and Higher Education. Griselle, I'm thrilled that you're here and know that you will do great things to advance our organization's awareness and understanding to better reach and assist our neighbors. Wanted to make sure the council got to meet her in person and know that she will work with us to really help to broaden our reach and ensure that we are able to reach more people within the community and engage with more people in the community and help them navigate the city organization and, you know, the city government a lot more easily. So, Griselle, I just wanted to, do you want to, do you want to just come up and just say hi?
Hello, everyone. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here. I am 100% committed to the amazing work that we are going to be able to do together. So, thank you.
We're glad you're here.
So, now to the work session, item number one. Good afternoon. We're excited about today's work session item, and I wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Robert Marbut for his work in our community to help us better understand the nature of our homeless population in San Marcos, and more importantly, to help us build an actionable plan to address homelessness. I also want to thank the council for your commitment to these issues by providing and funding the needed work to get this important work and study done. Dr. Marbut has done work like this in dozens of communities across Texas, and his guidance has helped many of them make great strides toward reducing homelessness in those communities. He began his work here about five months ago, and today's presentation will summarize his findings and recommendations. We look forward to hearing his report and getting to work on the implementation plan. Also want to thank Mr. Greg Carr and Shanna O'Brien for facilitating and working with Dr. Marbut as he did his work here in San Marcos. So, big thank you to staff. Really very much appreciate y'all. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Marbut. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I was asked to make it real, the presentation very quick, very fast, so we'll hit that so that we have more time for Q and A. Several of you I've met with during the time have met with pretty much anybody on the city staff who even remotely touches homelessness. And then we met with people throughout the entire community and such. So, you should have an electronic version of the more detailed report that went out. And I'm just going to give a quick overview of some of the key parts of the report and also some sort of setup on overall homelessness. So, the very first thing that I work with in every community is realizing that many people will come to the same desired outcome, but for different reasons. To me, the biggest tragedy of homelessness is the human capital of a person who experiences homelessness and the impact that it has on their family. That by far is the most detrimental thing that happens. You know, a person gets lost for a variety of different reasons. Normally, it's untreated mental illness with substance use. Sometimes it's post-traumatic stress. Sometimes it's domestic violence. Whatever that pathway that occurs, that when, when you lose that human being, that, to me, is the biggest tragedy. And everything we do is about trying to get people treated and exit homelessness, deal with the untreated mental illness, deal with the substance use, post-traumatic stress, or domestic violence. The next thing that it hits is it hits governments. It hits governments in terms of police departments, the community action type of department, zoning and planning. If you run your own jail or involve with the criminal justice system, sometime that's more of a county thing. It hits that. It hits the overcrowding of jail. At the county level, it hits with the mental health authority. It hits with the indigent medical care system, whatever it is. So, it hits there. It hurts the merchants. It hurts tourism. It hurts the neighborhoods. And that is an increasing problem around the country. If you've been watching what's gone on, and by the way, the speaker, I think he's a former council member, probably should do a little research. The housing-first communities that have done just solely housing have skyrocketed. The eight earliest adopters are Los Angeles, San Francisco, Honolulu, Portland, Seattle, Salt Lake, New York, and Chicago. And you'll see that all their numbers off the charts in the cities that are treating it much more holistically. Housing's a key part of this, absolutely key, but it's not the only part. Domestic violence deals with a lot of security and safety issues. Substance abuse deals with treatment. Mental health deals with a whole variety of issues. And the cities that are taking a more holistic approach, like San Antonio, has had, we're now in San Antonio, the 13th year of an 85% reduction in homelessness. We're not at zero. I don't think it's, I don't think you ever get to zero. But you can dramatically reduce homelessness if you take a very holistic approach, multidisciplined approach. So, when you look at overall homelessness, it's very costly. A lot of people hit it in different ways, but I think we should all have the common goal of dramatically reducing homelessness. And if you go in with it and appreciate that different people have sort of different reasons why they get to the same place, we do have the same common goal of dramatically reducing homelessness. The next is a slide. If you, if you solely look at the HUD measurements now, the HUD measurements now, it measured things like, how fast do you give a key to a person for a subsidized apartment? That's literally the number one measurement. Another one is how many vouchers you give out. And, and I don't think the, they may be important in terms of process, but I think what's, what local community is much more impactful is, how much homeless do you have on the street? Is it going up? Is it going down? How many people experiencing homelessness are in jail? Because the one thing you, I absolutely know is, is any attempt to criminalize homelessness will not work. It just hasn't worked anywhere. It, it, it's a waste of time. You know, a lot of people on, on one side of the aisle really tries to spend a lot of time on saying, let's arrest our way. And the reality is, even if you could arrest your way, even if you were Martin compliant, let's, you know, pretend like that happens, then you got to question, how big can you build your jail? You just can't keep building and building and building. And then you also have judges who let generally people out in the first six, seven, eight hours, so it doesn't work. And likewise, on the other side, the idea that you give away free housing and just unlimited, whether they're in your community or not, that doesn't work. What works in homelessness is treating your way out. Criminalizing it will never work. Trying to build your way out never will work. So, these five measurements, I try to focus more on, which is, are you increasing or decreasing? How does the street level look? And the reason why I like street level, that's a proxy for the other types of homeless. HUD has five definitions. Department of Ed has their own five different definitions, so there are 10 federal definitions or cohorts of homelessness. And if you work on the street level homeless, that acts as a proxy for your others. How much EMS calls you're getting? How much EMS transports are you getting? Not only does that show what the service level is for the city and when you go out in the county, but it also is a good proxy for what's happening at ERs and emergency departments. And are you appropriately using? If a person has a heart attack or stroke, that's a very appropriate place. But if you have what some people might refer to as an aspirin run, or something that could have been totally prevented by primary care, that doesn't make sense. It's very expensive to treat the homelessness community at the emergency room level. That's your most expensive service you have in the medical community. That's not the appropriate place to be treating primary care of homelessness. And you'll look at, at those, and those are real, these five are really different than, than what you will see at sort of a federal level. This is much more what really impacts the local government, the city government, and the community. Now, in terms of what we did, I wanted to have one slide in here that, that's, here we go. I think that's it there. I have a quick summary slide of sort of the Peter Drucker approach to systems. A lot of people remember Peter Drucker as sort of the leader of business management in the last century. His last six books he wrote really had a lot more to do with nonprofit. Nonprofit management, how could nonprofits be more efficient to address community social issues? And it was interesting, some of his books said, what could business teach nonprofits? But what can nonprofits teach business? And by the end, he became much more of a, what's your heart say, but also what does your brain say, together? You know, you can use both. You don't just use one, you don't use the other. And he had a lot about it, but he, he had a systems approach, which is probably the most important takeaway is, you got to know exactly what your problem is before you start solving it. I, I'm very suspect when people come in and say, I know how to solve it. Go do this approach or that approach. And they haven't even studied what's actually going on in a community. If you look at your, when we get here in a second, we're going to look at 10 different, very specific actionable items in four different groups. One of them, I've never even thought about doing or suggesting anywhere before. You have one unique, really unique opportunity here, and we'll go through this here in a second, that probably would never work in another city, but it will work here. And it, and it has some elements of already working here, and so you can build that out. So, you want to customize your solutions based off your unique challenges that you have. Every community has different sets of assets, different sets of problems, and you need to really understand that. You need to work on the root cause. You need to not enable, you want to engage people. If, if you look at any program that just hands out things and that's all you do, I will guarantee you that's going to increase homelessness. If you just hand out hygiene kits and sleeping bags and tents, that, all that does is promote homelessness. It doesn't promote getting treatment. Everything should be designed to getting you into a treatment program for your unique issues, getting that treatment, and then getting the housing, and then the housing will stick. That's why I often talk about this as a, is a housing-fourth issue. You need to engage a person. You need to assess the person, because sometimes one treatment will get, will work for one person, but it won't work for the other. So, you want to assess, stabilize, treat, and then house, so the housing sticks and it doesn't just go away. And so, you really need to understand the root causes and such. And so, that would be what a Peter Drucker systems approach, and he did this with a lot of nonprofits at the end. And I fortunately, I, he was one of the professors at the universities at, and so I really read a lot of his book, watched his lectures. So, let's just jump into, and I'm just, just go right to the recommendations, and then during Q and A, if you want to talk about observations or some of the other parts of the report, happy to do this. But to me, the concern I have is, we, we know a lot about San Francisco, know a lot about LA. We're learning a lot about Phoenix and Portland and Seattle. These cities have just emptied out. They have thousands of people experiencing homelessness. And Austin, unfortunately, is something we have to deal with in central Texas, because Austin has taken a real different approach than all the other communities in Texas. And it's interesting, they took their approach, and they're the city that's had the biggest increases, dramatic increases and such. And unfortunately, it's become very political between the prior mayor and the governor, a lot of media about that. To me, a lot of that stuff is gimmicks. If you're not treating people and you're just moving people around and moving around town, that doesn't help anybody. Doesn't help the person experiencing homelessness, doesn't help the, the community. So, when you design these programs, you want to design it as a way that will dramatically increase. So, I have 10 specific recommendations divided into four family groups. So, I'm going to do this by, each slide will be one of the family groups. First thing you got to do is you got to stop your growth. Anybody on I-35 is going to get a lot of north-south traffic. Most homelessness, when it moves around the nation, moves north and south because of weather. You see very little corridors that move east and west. Most everything moves up, the odd number interstate highways, the 5, the 15, the 35, the 75, the 85, the 95 are your, your big ones. So, there's very little movement that moves east and west. Notable exception to that is Denver to Salt Lake City moves east-west on a freeway. But most of your movement goes north and south, totally driven by weather, you know, and you'll see places in central Texas always sees a big bump in early October, sees another bump going into the late spring, and so you see some movements. When it gets hot here, we have people generally go up north, and so you get, you, it, sometimes it benefits us, sometimes it goes the opposite direction. But the key here is, I think the focus should be the permanent residents of San Marcos. This should, your treatment and recovery program should be driven to the people who have long connectivity here. If you start giving away things, you will have the Kevin Costner, you build it and they will come. You absolutely will. If you start giving away a lot of stuff and you say it can be for anybody, it can go. And so, I think you need a series of protocols that might, and here are ones we've used. You don't have to use these, but things like this. Did you go to high school here? Do you have family living, living or passed on from here? Can you prove up a utility bill two years ago? Were you born here? Things like that are very easily provable. There are public records. You could, we could Google almost anybody and find out those four things pretty quickly. Those are individuals that are ours. If we don't help them, nobody else is going to help them. But if you start saying, we're going to give a lot of supportive services to somebody who comes down from Austin because they don't like Austin anymore, that will overwhelm your system. And we know from the interviews, we know from what a lot of the police have done with the hot team, that you got about half your people are from out of town, easily half. And, and some of that depends also how far back you go. If you have somebody who's from out of town, but has lived here 10 years, they're probably the hardest group to work with, because they don't really have long-term ties here, but they also don't have ties somewhere else. But anybody in that first year that's from somewhere else, the best chance of their recovery, and this comes from the federal government, it comes from the, what's called SAMSA, it's under HHS, Health and Human Services, is the mental health, in essence, the federal mental health authority. They talk a lot about the best place to get treatment is in your home community, by far. You have a more successful chance at recovery when you're aware of your surroundings, you have connectivity, have relationships. And some psychologists, and I have a psychology degree, and some psychology people will go into sort of the next layer of questions, which will be, what about domestic violence? Everything I've just said on domestic violence should not be applied. If you send a person who's a victim or survivor of domestic violence back to the perpetrator, that could be a death sentence. So, anything connected to, to sort of family violence or domestic violence in a classical sense, you know, it's, it's a broader definition than most people think, those individuals should not go back home. That, that's dangerous. It literally could be a death penalty. So, domestic violence should stay here. But all the other types of homelessness, especially the mental health and substance use, what SAMSA says is, your best chance of recovery is in your home community, not in another community. And then somebody said, well, they got, their family doesn't support them anymore, they got a problem. Well, SAMSA talks about part of that recovery is rebuilding that relationship with that family. That is a critical part of it. And so, staying away from the problem is hiding from the problem. And so, when you go to, to, because we don't have unlimited resources, let's be honest. We don't have enough resources to take care of everybody. So, the question becomes, where, who do you best treat? And I think you should, we should always focus on our home community who has ties. And for people out of town, the best chance of their recovery at a mental health clinical level is going to where that family and connectivity is from, again, except domestic violence. So, very first thing to stop your bleeding, you have to start treating people on different tracks. It doesn't mean you don't treat people. That's a very important thing. It doesn't mean you arrest people. It means you treat people probably in three broad groups. Absolutely homegrown, you go, you, you go right into treatment, then you get stabilized, then you go to housing where housing sticks. If they're out-of-towner and it's not domestic violence, then that group should be focused on family reunification. And there's a real important way to do that. You need to do it with case management. If you do pure Greyhound therapy, which is the term used in, in, for the advocates, Greyhound therapy won't work. If I just go up and give you a bus pass and just send you, often people will be back in six weeks. That doesn't help you, doesn't help them, doesn't help the community you're going to. So, there's a proper family reunification. It takes a, you need to have case management, find a place to go, find the family, make sure it sticks and such. The ultimate thing we have found, and this is what LA, Sacramento, Portland, Seattle, Honolulu, New York, if you don't treat people first, the housing doesn't stick. That's why those cities have skyrocketed. You have to do the treatment first. So, stop the growth, focus on the homegrown, focus on your domestic violence, and then if they're out of town, work on a reunification back. The next four are what I would call system improvements. This was what Peter Drucker would talk about effectiveness and efficiency. Your hot team is one of, for, for a place that, that sort of, I don't want to say you stumbled into a hot team, but the hot team that the chief set up when he came in, has evolved and, you know, has morphed into other things, and it's really one of the most successful things you have going. It is fabulous building block to work on. And what we know about hot teams across the country, the more multidisciplined it is, the more effective it will be. There are hot teams around the country now starting to send EMTs out with the unit. That's, that's something that's come up in the last two years. Best hot teams in the country are with a police officer and a social worker who either has a master's level or understands homelessness. It could be, be both. You don't necessarily have to have a degree in it, but you got to have some proven up. And if you do it with a, a, a mental health person, you do it with a primary care person, you do it with police, you do it with an EMT, and it depends, because one encampment might be 20 people and another encampment might be three people. So, you don't want to, you don't want to show up with five people in an encampment of two or three people. That, that would actually get pushback. But if you're going to encampment of 20, a team of four or five people actually works real well, and then people start moving around. So, I think you want to build on one of your most successful building blocks, which is your hot team. And you have a unique opportunity to almost make this a virtual system. And, and nobody else have, if I've ever seen your, the, the ability, I think you all have the ability to really do this well, because you've already done it in a way. And if you add in a social worker, and I got very specific recommendations, and if you also start tapping the marshals. The marshals have an advantage that their training is a little bit more customizable to homelessness. Police have it too, but the police will have to do some extra training and get there. But the biggest thing the marshals have is their geographical locations. They're targeted for municipalities, parks, and the water. And that's where a lot of your homeless uniquely is. So, the marshals are already geographically uniquely benefit, they're, the police are going everywhere, whereas the park, the, the, the marshals, they're going to an area that's uniquely, that really overlaps the homelessness. So, I think if there's a So I think if there's a way to tap into the marshals, to ask as it sort of act as a force projector or multiplier to what police, the downside of the marshals, which would have to be an internal conversation, is the marshals are 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 going to be useless for us during the summer months because they're they're so involved with the parks and the water during the summer. I mean, that's a very important part of who San Marcos is, just like Nebrantful's. So the 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 marshals, I don't think can help us during the summertime as currently configured. Maybe one day you could do that, maybe there's a special unit or special individuals, and I go through that in the recommendations. But it would be very beneficial if the marshals, especially during the spring and fall, when when water had, you know, spring break being an exception, those peak times, the marshals could be very, very helpful and utilized. And I go through some very specific recommendations. Next is, I think you got to get Boise compliant. Your your speaker earlier talked about that. I I give a real solid definition, I put in here on this. I was involved with the case that went to the Supreme Court that that was stayed. Technically, you're not in the Ninth Circuit, so technically, the Ninth Circuit decision on Boise does not technically affect you. But most federal judge, district judges are using that as their standard. And the reason why they're using that standard is it went to an appeal out of the Ninth Circuit up Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court let it stand. So in essence, Supreme Court said, we like where Boise ended up, we liked where Martin Boise Boise, and it sort of replaced Pottinger versus Miami. And it basically says you have to have the right type of housing and you have to have the right type of services. So you have to have a unique set of services based off the individual you would like to engage, and you have to have enough quantity. So it's an issue of what the service is or the quality of service, but it's also an issue of quantity. And if you don't meet both, you're not compliant. Right now, I don't think you'd be compliant by any measurement now. Now, if you do, if you follow what we talked about in here, I think you will get to compliance. So if you do get to compliance, then you can utilize that as a tool. Right now, you you don't get to utilize that because you're not compliant. But I think we can get you to compliance pretty quickly, and if you do, then you have more tools in your toolbox to to utilize. Next is your IT system, your management information. That can get really, really wonky, I'll spare you on this, but you're part of the state, balance the state system, and we've been talking about what improvements can be made there. But the key there is you want your information technology, whether it's high-tech or what the police have in their little, in their binder inside the hot team. I meant, that's an information system. It's a paper one, but it's an information. So whichever one you're using, or whatever hybrid you might get to, you want it to be a case management tool that gets people into treatment, not a tool to arrest people and not a tool to just track numbers. Right now, the state system is a lot more about how do we count people and count numbers and count categories. You need to go way beyond a sort of a a calibrating system. It needs to be, how do you make it indicate a case management tool and such? And then whenever possible, you absolutely need to separate family and children. I have a lot of data in there about the trauma caused with children when they experience homelessness, especially around adult. There's a great study out of California, it's ACES, it's sometimes called toxic exposure on children, and you'll see it. The key is, whatever you design, you want to keep your families with children away from your adults, males and your adult females, you want to keep that separated. And so those four are your improvements in the system. The next are, how do you expand capacity? Again, to get to Boise compliance, you need to expand capacity. And so South Side Community Center had, I I know there's some issues of the design and the layout and such like that, but they are probably the best suited to most cost-effectively get you some increased housing real quickly. They're interested in doing it, they have some issues that that are in the, that that might be floodplain issues that have to be worked through. But they already provide the centralized services. The key is you want to efficiently add housing without creating central core services. They already have the core services there. They're set up, they're doing a good job. Their their new management over the last two years, everybody has told me how much it's improved. I hadn't been there in about five years since last time I was there, and I was very impressed with the management system. I've met the board, a lot of the new board members, they're doing, they're fabulous. So that that's one place you can increase capacity. The other is to bring Salvation Army back online. They were fat, they were doing fabulous things pre-COVID, and basically, they they really leaned into COVID and ran out of money. I'm trying, oversimplifying what happened, but they're they're interested in wanting to bring back that system. We've spent a lot of time with Salvation Army, and if we can get them back where they get their hotel motel, some of their family reunification, that increases capacity. You need to look at housing of all types. Housing is critical, it's part of the solution, it is not a panacea to the solution. But you absolutely need to try to get housing of any kind. And then the, you have some unique issues with families and children here. Your two ISDs have incredible McKinney-Vento liaison, and that's the technical federal term, that every school district in America has to have somebody in their school district designated to work on homelessness, families and children. And you are so blessed and lucky to have two fabulous ladies that worked that program at the both school district, they're amazing. What they do, you you give them a dollar, they make, they weave out eight dollars of services. I've never seen two ladies, you you give them a penny and they make it a dollar. I mean, they're so efficient, so effective, and they match it with things, they're fabulous. But you're starting to have some family and children numbers starting to bump up. You're starting to get community and schools in here as they get more involved that and expand, they, that's an incredible program. But they do need some resources. They're the most efficient system I've ever seen of ISDs, they're fabulous. And one of my recommendations is rather than the city or county sort of creating a new family and children system, you utilize what you already have, but give them a little, give them a little, some resources, and maybe it's a, maybe it's a alpha study or a beta study, and you give it a try, and you do a one-time grant, see how they do with it. But I think those two ladies, if they could get some resources, I think the best place to work with your family and children is let those ladies keep doing what they do, but resource them to a level that would be helpful. And then the last is a future consideration issue. Nebrantful's has gotten to the point where they needed to do this. So if you've been watching their news, they have bought an old, well, they're converting an old fire station. I think technically they had to, there was a third party in the middle of it, but it was an old fire station. It's now been turned over to the McKinney, McKenna Foundation. They're actually setting it up and helping and working with the city over there. And they're going to build their capacity to what they need, and that's that difference of becoming McKinney, that becoming a Boise compliant. We did everything we could with them, did all sorts of other stuff, and they were still short of compliance on Boise, Martin versus Boise. And so they're bu- building this, they're literally got control of it now, they're well through the design, there's some construction already started on it, on the site prep, and they'll be up and going. You may need that, but I wouldn't start with that. Don't, do everything else first, see, see what the other improvements do, but it may be in the future that you're still short after you make all these other possible improvements. And if you are, then that would be when you consider actually building a new place. But I wouldn't start with that yet. I I think you have enough improvement in the system, you can work and see what happens when you really focus on in-town versus out-of-town and focus on not enabling the out-of-towners to come and convert. The worst possible thing you can do is convert out-of-towners to in-towners. Because that means it thins the resources for the people that are, have long ties to your community and such. And I think that, and so I think in about 18 months, 20, 24 months, look, see what the other improvements have done, and if they've dropped it, you might get into compliance or you might be just a little short. If you're a little short, then you go to South Side, you go to Salvation Army. But if you have a big sort of, you know, nut that you can't seem to crack, then that would be the time to bring on a a a more standalone program and such. And again, some cities have needed it to get compliant, other cities don't, they they get there other ways. So that's it. And I think probably, I I think if we just go right to Q and A, Madam Mayor, I think that would probably be the best. I can go through a lot more and such, but I I just want to give the quick overview and then we can jump into wherever you want to go with questions.
All right, and and thank you. And we do have the full report available in our packet. I just want to remind council members, we've got several topics for today, 3 o'clock. Ms. Garza has her hand up first.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a quick question, let me bring it up real quick. You mentioned the hot team. So, here it is. Yeah, so that they're like very successful, and so that's why you are recommending expanding the hot team? Just for the folks at home, can you explain what the hot team is? And then how how you got to the conclusion that they were successful? Like, what measures did you take to find that?
So your, a hot team, for people who don't know, is that's is the acronym Homeless Outreach Team. And if you look at the five measures, they reduced, definitely reduced visual homelessness, definitely reduced camping, which are some of the measures we look at. There was definitely a a reduction in EMS transport, EMS calls. And then when the hot team sort of had to go off and do other things, there was a period of time where they got really involved in other things, then you started seeing the numbers come back up. So it wasn't that not only would did the numbers go down when they were active, when they got off and got involved in some other things and they weren't able to put as many hours in, the numbers rose back up. And so, and and you want to use your hot team, and I I put some comments in here, you absolutely don't want a hot team criminalizing homelessness. It doesn't work, it never will work. Every community's tried to do that, that doesn't work. So you want the hot team to be the tip of the sword of engagement, whereas they're the people bringing you into the treatment programs, bringing you into that expanded capacity. And in some cases, they may even be able to jump that and get you into housing. Normally, if a person's in an encampment, there's going to be, need to be some level of treatment and recovery, so when you give a housing, the housing sticks. You don't want to give housing and have a person just rotate out and recidivize out.
Mr. Prather?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Garza, did you have other questions?
Well, yeah, I just had a follow-up question. You said, when they, when the hot team is on about the numbers were decreasing per the measures that you listed, and then when they were doing other stuff, they were, I'm sorry, they were decreasing, and then when they weren't around, they, the numbers increased. How are you getting that data? I've asked for data regarding folks experiencing homelessness before, and so I'm just curious, like, what, is that just like qualitative based on observations or quantitative? Does the hot team take some sort of numbers? Like, how did you come to that conclusion?
I went out to all the encampments, and so when I went out, I saw where the encampments were at the beginning, before they started to do that, I overlapped with the time. Then the encampments went dramatically down, then they started to come back up. And so by just going out-
Based on your observation?
Yeah. And and just going out and counting, it it's, it's not quite a quantitative, but it would be sort of a mix of qualitative and quantitative.
Gotcha, cool. And then, I guess, you kept indicating, which I agree with, that we talked about in the Homelessness Coalition or Committee, that criminalization doesn't work, but are your recommendations rely heavily on police intervention with the hot team? So like, what would your response be to the literature that exists indicating that increasing policing, regardless of what type, increases criminalizations of those experiencing homelessness? Like, it seems like those two things, those two points that you're making, they're kind of like at odds with each other, right? If criminalization doesn't work, and we're navigating in a resource-starved county, and all we're doing is like primarily focusing on increasing policing, like, how how does that all, how do we reconcile that?
I'm having a hard time with her on the speaker and breaking up. Could somebody, did some, did somebody hear it better on that side that could summarize the question?
Well, she was asking about policing, but I I guess maybe what the important thing to know or to just talk about is while the Homeless Outreach Team may be police officers, they're not there to arrest and do things that we we think of as as police doing. Would that be a fair statement?
Fair statement, you don't want police, now, if it's a criminal felony, you know, murder, stabbing, rape, you know, felonies, you got to treat a felony as a felony. But you don't want a hot team going around arresting people, that doesn't work, it it doesn't. You want a hot team engaging people into the treatment, and that's why I think the hot team needs to add people to it. You don't want it to just be police officers. You want some mental health, you want behavioral health, you you want counselors, treatment, you might even take agencies out with you that are doing that, a lot of cities do that. But you won't know, until you analyze a specific encampment or an area of town, back alleys or cul-de-sacs or under the bridges, you have to know who that is before you customize your team. But you want to, the more people you have access to put on your team, it may be an EMT, it may be a behavioral health. So you want to expand, you don't want it just to be police officers.
Right. Ms. Garza, does that address what you were looking for?
Yeah, and and any other questions that are related to that in particular, I can, I'll ask like in the committee. But I have one more. Do you have any models or any other, like, cities you've worked with that kind of have a system set up where we could closely monitor the efficacy of a hot team, right? So he doesn't look like a lot of quantitative data is taken, but I think it would make our neighbors feel more comfy if we decide to devote more resources to this team, knowing that we are going to be monitoring what's working, right? So are you familiar with any other?
Yeah.
Or any mechanism of doing that?
And as you design it, you want to build in some metrics, both tripwire metrics, but also success metrics. So you you want to probably measure some of those five, we talked about, I had a slide to show you, you know, are those working? And then you also want to monitor, like, how many placements the team makes, how many are successful? Are they successful one year out? You know, in San Antonio, Haven for Hope, for example, has now placed 41, 4,100 people into long-term sustainable housing. And we know that's sustainable because one year out, they're still in the same place you had. That's why you don't, if you just give a person a housing voucher and it doesn't stick, it doesn't work. So that would probably be another metric you would add in. So there are a lot of metrics you can use. Probably the most successful hot team system in the country is Pinellas County. They have five hot teams. That is a multi-discipline, multi, they have 22 different cities involved in their hot team.
And what what county is that and in what state?
Pinellas County, Florida, West Tampa, not not East Tampa, but West Tampa. And and the reason why that's great is East Tampa has seen a huge increase in homeless, West Tampa has seen an 85% reduction, average 83, 85, for about 12 years now, so. So there are a lot of metrics you can build in, and you want to build those metrics as the team in. And you don't want it to be just engagements, you don't want it to be outputs, you want it to be outcomes.
Right. Okay, Mr. Prather?
I think this is a a good action plan to address the increasing homelessness in our community while also keeping our efforts compliant with law. Some of my big takeaways, you know, the best chance for recovery is in your home community. And we have to tread lightly on that because we're near, large cities like Austin, they're experiencing some of the biggest homelessness in in our country. Treating the causes first, you know, family, I I deal with homelessness with my work, sometimes weekly, but one of the first things I always ask is like, where's your family? Does your family know where you're at, what what's going on? Because ultimately, rebuilding those sometimes broken relationships and, you know, your family knowing where you're at can provide not only a a support system, but sometimes housing for people as well. housing for people as well. I know you kind of mentioned about getting to the weeds of it, but I think it's very important about the software and the syncing of the social services throughout the community. The city, we signed up on HEMS, it's a software database, but we haven't really had much buy-in from other social service organizations. And I think us syncing our efforts, because there's a lot of organizations in our community that deal with homelessness, Southside, Home Center, Food Bank, our school districts, Hayes County Homeless Coalition, but you know, how do we sync our efforts so we're making sure these people are aware of all the resources? And that we're aware of, you know, because right now, the, it's done through more, I guess, say, informal referral process, you know, hey, have you heard from Bob, or something like that? And we really need to formalize that. And, you know, imagine a big agency like the city working without Outlook, right? You know, it'd be impossible, right? So utilizing software to help sync our efforts, I think, is very, very important. And I saw in there about adding staff to hot teams. I hope, as we're in our budget discussions, that we're looking at that, and how do we increase our efforts and our resources? Those hot teams, you know, engaging and not turning a blind eye. You know, it's inhumane to turn a blind eye to homelessness and to allow, you know, entrenched encampments, ultimately, it's not helping them either. But they're, you know, anecdotally, just, you know, from my own personal experiences working out in homeless encampments, there has been a significant reduction in the encampments that does not necessarily translate to a reduction in homelessness, but there has been a reduction in the encampments. But this is a good action plan. We really need to address this heads-on. We really need to start utilizing and putting forth resources and personnel to address this, because if we don't, it will, it will get ahead of us, and it will drown our organizations that are trying to help with this.
Okay, and Mr. Gonzalez?
And if I just say, thank you for your help in your committee. I think we met almost monthly there, so a couple times more. So thank you very much for all the input and help, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Mine's going to be three questions in different parts. The first one is, how many of those homeless people do we have in San Marcos, more or less? And the second question is, how many are homegrown? And the third question is, how many of those people or families? Just to give me the idea of what we're looking at.
Okay. On your families, that's a real different, that's Department of Education and a really different number, and that's in the McKinney-Vento. I'll get you that from both school districts, do that report every year. But it's hundreds with both those, but it's a different definition, so we have to understand it as a different, you know, what that definition means and such. And we can, I'll get you both reports from the ISD, so you have the exact amount and see the trend line on that. The other side, the, it appears that a little over half your people are outside of your community, you know, that, every way I looked at it, every way I measured it, it kept coming up, a little over half, 55, 60, you know, but not quite over 60. The problem you're going to have, and we need to have a sort of a community conversation about that, or the Homeless Coalition, or the staff, or whoever, is what do you do about the person who is from Oklahoma? And to be honest, most of the people we found out of town are from Oklahoma. That's where most of the people were, come anecdotally. And so, the question is, what happens if they've been here eight years? Are you going to define that person as an out-of-towner, or are you going to define them as now an in-towner? That's, before I can answer that, we need to have that question. But we do know that over half are originated from somewhere else and are not from here. That we know for certain.
Yeah, I was born and raised in San Marcos. Back in the 70s, I knew just about everybody, if they were homeless or not. Now, I can go to different places and definitely not from here. I just, you can tell. I was just wondering, I like the idea you had, let their town take care of their own. And, you know, I'd like to take care of our own as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, my question to the council is, there's a number of recommendations in the plan. Some cost a little bit of money, some cost a bunch. Some are organizational charter assignment changes, which are under the city manager, and some are not under the city government at all. So are y'all okay to have staff review this report and bring back an implementation plan that fits San Marcos? Yes, yes, yes. I'm hearing, I'm hearing a yes from everyone, including Ms. Garza.
Right. And I guess my question would be, when they report back, is that going to go through the Homelessness Committee first, or is it going to come straight to us? The reason I ask is because I have a couple of suggestions for future Homelessness Committee meeting agendas that are related to the presentation, so.
I think it can go to the committee first, if council's okay with that, just because you can vet it in more detail and make sure that, you know, you're really vetting that in a way that will help us to have a better product at the end of the day when we bring it to the full council. So that would be my recommendation, is to have it go to the Homelessness Committee first, then bring it to full council.
And Mr. Prather, are you good with putting this report on our next agenda? Okay, okay. So we can, we can have those, that conversation at our next meeting, Ms. Garza.
Excellent. Is that going to happen in time for the budget discussion, or before or after? Because I think I, what I understood is Mr. Prather wanted us to like contemplate the report as we're going through the budget process?
Well, we can have a discussion, and then staff will have their discussion, and we'll, then we'll meet up on it, so.
Yeah, we'll have to see how we, how we make that timeline work. We'll have to work through that.
Well, and some of this may not be-
Immediate.
I was going to say this year, but yeah, sometimes things have to be faced.
Well, there's that, and then you also had some ARPA money set aside, so it may be stuff that we can do as part of that commitment that you've set aside versus it being part of the budget process at this time. So I think we just need to work through the recommendation plan and then go from there.
Yeah, and council members, I asked that the ARPA information be, and it's on the message board, and also more definition on the McKinney-Vento about the students and the Martin v. Boise. So all of that, there's more detail on the message board, and that message board is open to the public, so they can get that also. Ms. Reyes, is there anything else we need on this item?
I believe so.
Okay. In that case, thank you so much for, for working with us and providing a report for us, and we thank you for your experience and expertise.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And thank you to the staff members who supported Dr. Marbut in having the, going through the information. Mr. Vino?
Mayor.
Item, I'm sorry.
Some representatives of the Hayes County Homeless Coalition here as well-
Yes, they are.
-have volunteered and have done immense amount of work, if count.
Yes.
So thank you all for y'all's help.
Yep.
And leadership as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Prather, I got to serve in this committee for a little bit, and you're the president, I guess, we could say, and your leadership, your heart's in it, and thanks for keep on serving on that board.
He does a really good job. Mr. Vino, item two.
Receive a staff presentation and hold discussion regarding the Strategic Housing Action Plan and provide direction to staff.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The following presentation you will receive during today's work session is on the city's draft Strategic Housing Action Plan. The city council identified workforce housing as one of your five strategic initiatives from 2018 to 2022. To further this initiative, the Workforce Housing Task Force was formed in 2019 to develop a strategic housing action plan aimed at addressing housing needs in San Marcos. Today's presentation will provide an overview of that project and present new data on housing in San Marcos. We know that housing affordability is a challenge facing both San Markans, our neighboring communities, as well as cities around the country. The Housing Action Plan offers possible solutions and tools to address housing concerns in our community. Today, staff is seeking direction from council on how to proceed with the plan, so we can ensure we're appropriately carrying out council policies on housing. The presentation will be delivered by our Director of Planning and Development Services, Amanda Hernandez, and the Assistant Director of Planning, Andrea Villalobos. With that.
Mayor and Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. I'm actually only going to be up here to publicly recognize Ms. Andrea Villalobos, who was recently promoted to the Assistant Director of Planning with our department. She has been with the city for about nine years now, and as a senior planner, she was intimately involved in this project, so I am fully confident that she will give you the best presentation, and I will be here as well as Andrea at the end, if you have any questions.
Good evening, Council. Andrea Villalobos, Assistant Director of Planning. Today's presentation is to talk about a project we kicked off in 2018 called the Strategic Housing Action Plan. And this plan, as Ms. Reyes mentioned, offers possible solutions and tools to address housing concerns in San Marcos. Because this project kicked off several years ago, I'm going to provide an overview of the plan's origin. I'll discuss some of the housing challenges our community is facing, which is based on data from our housing needs assessment. I'll also give an overview of the draft Strategic Housing Action Plan in its draft form, and I'll provide an update on where we are now and new data that is actually available to us. And then lastly, at the end of the presentation, we're seeking council direction on how to proceed with this project. The project began with a city council strategic initiative. Council identified workforce housing as one of their five strategic initiatives from 2018 to 2022. To address this initiative, a workforce housing task force was formed in 2019 to develop a strategic housing action plan aimed at addressing housing needs in our community. To address this initiative, a housing task force was formed in 2019 to develop this plan and really brought together community leaders, stakeholders, and residents to tackle the challenge of affordable housing. Understanding the city cannot do it alone, it was important to have really this unique and diverse perspective from our community. In addition, city council created a Workforce Housing Council Committee to work alongside this task force that was created. City Council's Workforce Housing Strategic Initiative had three different goals. First, it was to assemble a workforce housing task force, which was done. Also, it was to increase the rates of homeownership. And then lastly, it was to maintain existing housing stock in safe conditions. The task force refined those three goals into four new goals. Those were to first, leverage our community partners in order to achieve these goals, expand opportunities for housing, preserve and enhance our existing housing stock, and also to quantify our housing needs to really determine if we're going to be successful, and really how we measure that moving forward. So this slide presents a timeline of the project. The task force first met in 2018 and created the goals from the prior slides. In November of 2018, we launched the Housing Choice Survey, which asked various questions related to housing. And we actually had 2,000 participants on that survey. And then the task force actually held eight different working groups to discuss topics, such as preventing displacement, long-term housing affordability, creating new housing, also creating a robust public outreach plan, and then also potential updates to our development code. In January 2019, the task force reviewed the completed housing needs assessment, which really was an aggregated data document. It included quantitative census data, and then also had those qualitative survey results from that survey with our 2,000 participants. Using this data in that report, the task force then created strategies and actions to address really those trending issues that were starting to be identified by our housing. In May, we launched the Public Outreach Campaign, which included community conversations that we had with our community, where we were actually able to present this data to our community in sort of one-on-one or group conversations, and then really get feedback from those who were listening to that presentation. So get some feedback on some of the ideas that we were presenting so far. We also did a robust housing story campaign, so we actually asked folks to share their housing story. Everyone in our community has one. Some of the things that we asked them are, what are your housing challenges now? What is your hope for housing in the future? What should housing look like to yourself or to your, to your family members? And then also, why do folks choose to live in San Marcos to begin with as well? So we really collected all of that data at their housing stories campaign. So one key takeaway that I really want to put forward is there is no magic solution that solves housing challenges. It's really important to use different strategies to address housing challenges being faced by residents of different income brackets. And so, the majority of land in San Marcos and across the country is actually privately owned. Housing and land is privately owned. And so, new housing or the cost of housing is therefore driven really by private property owners. However, there are a lot of strategies that we in San Marcos can implement and that other communities similar to us are implementing. And really, that comes in with partnering with others and really trying to take a comprehensive and a balanced approach to our solutions. So this chart here is really just showing the incomes of families in San Marcos. It's an estimate of the household incomes of our community from 2021. Household income is something that is gathered and presented in the census and the American Community Survey. So San Marcos is located within the Austin-Round Rock Georgetown metropolitan statistical area. It's often just referred to as the Austin MSA for short. And the median family income for the Austin MSA in 2021 was $98,900. In other words, the median income for a four-person household, and that is defined by HUD, is So in San Marcos, as you can see by this chart here, only about 20% of households in San Marcos actually make above that amount. The majority of households in San Marcos, 37% of them, have an annual income that's actually less than $29,000, and are considered extremely low income as defined by the United States Department of Housing and Development, otherwise known as HUD. So this graph, really, it's just demonstrating that there are different housing challenges that are faced by folks within each of these different income brackets, and therefore, there really needs to be different strategies to solve each based on that income bracket. One of the housing needs assessments from 2019 really started to show four key needs that were emerging based on that report. So the first one is, we need additional affordable rentals for residents earning less than $25,000. So that was a key need from that report in 2019. A second key need was that we need to prevent displacement. Our third key need is that we need more homes priced near or below $200,000, and we also need increased ownership product diversity. That just means, what are the products, the housing products available to our community on the market now? And then lastly, we need to improve the condition and accessibility of existing housing stock here in San Marcos. So this next slide is really just showing that housing costs have an impact on whether a community can own a house. So this slide here is really just about homeownership. HUD defines a cost burdened family as those who pay more than 30% of their income on housing. So that means how much you're paying for your rent, for your mortgage, and your utilities, so just paying to have your water and electric. So just a really good simplified rule of thumb is that to determine whether or not you can afford to purchase a home, you just need to multiply your annual income by three. Very simple, simple equation for the purposes of our discussion. So I looked up what a classroom teacher at SMCISD makes, and their starting salary is $52,000 this school year. So an affordable home for a teacher at this salary would be about $156,000. So actual sale prices in San Marcos are a completely different story, and so I took a look at the median home price over the past three years in April, and that's displayed here on the slide. And you'll notice that it's significantly more than $156,000, looking back at the median price. In April of 2023, the median sale price of homes is more than double what a teacher could afford, at about $374,000. So really, there are very few homes available under $200,000, and availability has shown to be decreasing since 2021. In April of this year, there were only about 5% of homes on the market that were under $200,000, and the needs assessment report from 2019 actually showed that most of the homes that are under $200,000 are typically going to be condos or townhomes, so that specific type of product that's at that price point. So this next slide is really just indicating that housing also has an impact on those who rent in our community. This graph- This graph here shows the share of renter households that are cost burdened across different income ranges. So the red bars indicate data from 2021, and the light blue indicates data from 2016 in San Marcos. And so it's really showing that renter households who have incomes of about $20,000 to $35,000, which is called out there by that blue arrow, those are actually the most cost burdened 2021. So they spent about 86% of their income on housing. This next slide is really just showing that median household income and this issue is something that's affecting a lot of cities, particularly our surrounding cities. So this graph shows an overview of the median household income for several comparison cities. San Marcos' median household income is most similar to that of Waco, of Bryan, of College Station, and Seguin, of which have or are near a college or university, so I think that's just also important to consider. And so in general, this last slide is really talking about that we heard that housing costs really affects everyone in our community. Throughout the development of the plan, we talked about this data by hosting those community conversations I mentioned, and we also created virtual and visual toolkits to explain a lot of this and facilitate the discussion. We received written comments. We had over 100 housing stories that can be found on our website. We hosted open house events, and really, we saw eight key themes really emerge from those conversations. The themes included the desire to meet our housing needs, to increase the diversity of types of housing in our community, to also consider where housing is located and whether or not that housing is near or far from services that people need, whether that's just getting to school or going to the grocery store. We also heard from the community that we need to pursue more partnerships, and they were really expressing the desire for subsidized housing, and also that jobs, homelessness, and flooding were key themes also talked about by the community at that time, that those were also indicators or impacts on where they choose to live or what they, product they live in. In total, we hosted 38 community conversations and reached 730 individuals. This is just an overview of the different groups that we talked to. So now I just want to provide a brief overview of the draft Strategic Housing Action Plan. It includes four goals, six strategies, and 23 actions. They all vary in scale, they vary in level of difficulty, and the required resources, as well as the potential impact that each action might have. So I'm going to just provide a brief overview of the six different strategies in the plan. So the first strategy is to advance home maintenance and repair programs to essentially help residents stay in their existing homes, which is important. That comes to play with displacement, and also the most affordable home that you have is the one that you already have, right? The second strategy is to implement lifecycle and diverse housing principles to essentially address that continuum of housing I just mentioned, that there are different income levels in our community, and we need to make sure that as people move through the stages of their life, that they have that product available for them from when they maybe graduate from high school to when they retire. So what are the different options in our community related to that? The third strategy is to focus on programs that create, preserve, and extend long-term affordability and individual wealth creation to really address the challenge of rising property values as well as rising land costs, which is something that we know is occurring. Fourth strategy is about preapproving residential development and strategic locations to ensure that we're really accommodating new housing that is needed to support both our existing residents and really that anticipated population growth that we know is coming, that we're already feeling. So that's really about thinking about our supply of housing and whether or not we have enough to meet our needs. The fifth strategy is to focus on removing some of those regulatory or procedural barriers which might actually be impacting the price of housing or the timing of new housing units. And then lastly, the sixth strategy is really focused on education. So we should be promoting and educating our community, our stakeholders, even our home builders, on what are our housing needs, what are our challenges, what are solutions, what types of products do we want as a policy for our community? So picking back up on the timeline, the final task force meeting was on September 12, 2019. And then on September 24, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered the draft housing plan and recommended approval of the plan with amendments to remove a few action items. On March 3, 2020, staff requested direction from city council on the plan adoption process, and council really directed staff to work with the Workforce Housing Council Committee as well as the chair and the vice chair of the task force. However, we didn't receive any formal direction on the adoption process at that time. A few other notable steps that have occurred since then include developing the Vision SMTX Comprehensive Plan. Housing is one of the elements of our comprehensive plan and was discussed as part of the plan sort of to-do list. So within our housing element within the draft comprehensive plan, the Strategic Housing Action Plan is referenced as well. And then also, last year, and I'll talk about this a little bit more in a second, we actually participated in the Peer Cities Network, which is a really great opportunity to talk about housing with other similarly sized cities. And so today's staff is really seeking direction from council on the adoption process of the Strategic Housing Action Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission made six amendments, which are outlined here on this slide. At this time, we are not asking for these to be acted upon today, but we wanted to just provide a refresher on what amendments occurred. These are also redlined within the draft plan, which is in your packet as well. So staff applied to participate in this Peer Cities Network, and we were actually one of nine cities selected in 2022 to participate. The program was managed and is still managed by the Local Housing Solutions, which is in association with the New York University's Furman Center. Really, it's an amazing resource. Definitely recommend checking out the website. They are constantly updating it with great stuff. We worked for them, with them for about eight months. We had a working group, and we engaged with housing experts, national housing practitioners, and different cohort cities which are similar in size to us, really to learn about evidence-based housing policies and really collaborate on finding solutions moving forward. So eight out of the nine peer cities, or about 88% of the cities, actually did have a college or university in their community, and so that was helpful. The university ranged in scale, but I think that was helpful to our conversation. Some of the key takeaways that we actually learned by participating in that was the Local Housing Solutions Policy Framework, which was a really phenomenal tool. It essentially outlined four pillars and 20 policy program categories that they actually recommend that cities incorporate into their housing policy strategies. And so on the right side of the slide there, I just indicated some of those four pillars that they discussed. We collaborated with those eight other cities as well, and that was an amazing opportunity to participate in. We discussed lessons learned, successes, and also just the shared challenges, which is also helpful. We learned about an online needs assessment tool, which actually produces visual graphics for communities, and I'll talk about that in the next couple of slides as well. And then we also reviewed our current housing policy in San Marcos against, or in conjunction with that policy framework that Housing Solutions provided to us. And so we found a lot of areas of opportunity, and I think that was really helpful for us as a community as well. So one issue that all plans are really faced with is the minute that a plan is adopted, any data within that plan is already out of date. So the data from the Strategic Housing Action Plan is outdated, and it's based on the available data that was used to create the plan in that 2018 to 2019 framework. So the data in the plan, as I mentioned, was a combination of census, so quantitative data, and American Community Survey data, and then also that qualitative side where we were asking and talking to folks through that survey. And so as we've been looking at this plan, we realized that only about 5% of the data within our Strategic Housing Action Plan can be updated by staff today. And it's typically very specific quantitative data. I have an example here, for example, just updating our population numbers. So despite that outdated data, staff does have an efficient way to move forward and really meet our data needs for the plan. So we have two different solutions. Foremost, our work with the Peer Cities really directed us to that resource I mentioned, which created a Housing Needs Assessment Report and created graphics. It aggregates in real time as new data is created. It aggregates new census and American Community Survey data and then creates those visuals for us. So that's a phenomenal tool that we can utilize that it's always up to date. And then the second piece that helps us meet our data needs is our Geographic Information Systems Division. In other words, our GIS Division actually created an online hub that has interactive infographics that also compile the census data, but they also kind of roll in third-party forecasts and ESRI forecasts. And so we hope we can utilize this data source and then also fill in some of our permitting data in order to fill in some gaps and sort of flesh that out a little bit. So using these tools are beneficial to us for three reasons. First, they're easily accessible by staff today. We can do this now. Second, they're public facing, so they're designed to really reflect the most current data, so that means the public will always see the most current data that's available. And then also, they're an interim data source between when we have the capacity or funding to do a larger needs assessment, similar to what we did in 2019. So they kind of serve as an interim between when we might want to do that. This is an example of the Housing Solutions visual data. I included this on a previous slide, and so it just shows you really the type of graphics that are being created. And then this next slide here is an example of our GIS data frame that has updated information, has some interesting information from our ESRI, and which is essentially our GIS software that we can be rolled into. And lastly, the purpose of today's presentation again was really just to bring city council up to speed on where we left off on this project and really ask for direction on where do we need to go next with this plan. No action is proposed during our work sessions today. We're really just here seeking direction. So just a rundown of what we are asking for today. The first step in the adoption process is complete, as you can see on the left. The plan was approved with amendments by our Planning and Zoning Commission, and so those Planning Commission amendments will remain in the document, and they'll just be redlined, so those will stay there. The direction we really seek today is there in the center. We really want to know is, does city council agree with staff's proposal to make only minor amendments and updates to the plan in order to first redline the document with some of that most recent data, as I mentioned, that can be really easily replaced, that, you know, 5% of data that staff can do? Secondly, we can add an appendix, which includes that updated data, as I mentioned, using those two different data sources. And then also, we want to update the plan process, so some minor changes to the plan process just to reflect that we're here in 2023 and reflect this meeting as well. So if council would not like for us to do this, we really seek direction on what council would like for us to do next in terms of data updates. And then second, the second direction that we need from city council is, is council okay with staff putting this plan onto an agenda for discussion and action? And so if council is not okay with that, really, what direction would council like for us to take moving forward with this plan? And that concludes my presentation, and we are here to answer any questions.
Okay, time for questions. Mr. Scott.
Yeah, I think you hit it about putting it on as an agenda item, because there's a lot of, a lot of area that I think we can grow in as far as our apartments that we're building. Is there a slowdown on the amount of apartments that are being permitted to build? Have they, because I'm hearing that it's actually slowing down because the numbers aren't working.
Are you talking about all or the low-income housing projects?
Well, we have that rule, I believe, that we're trying to find lower-income housing for, in the apartments, right, to subsidize them. And we're at 10%, but we went to 20%. So I'm hearing actually what the market's doing is they're not building because it's too high, the numbers aren't working. If it were 10%, it would work. So we're actually not getting more housing because they're not building.
Perhaps that's something that we would ask them to come back with.
Yeah, I thought maybe we should bring it back.
I had asked for a list of the housing projects, the light sea projects, and what income levels, because you know, some, they have different income levels. And y'all sent me a link to a map, but I don't think it's the right one. It's, we can talk about that later. But just a list, I could go back and pull it out of old packets and stuff, but if we could get that, so we have some idea of what has happened, because many of those have happened since we last looked at this report. I'm not saying problem has been solved by any stretch of the imagination, but that would be helpful information to have. So.
Yeah, that was.
So we have some of that information.
Yes.
And do they have to report to us occupancy rates? Do they have to report to whomever it is that funds and approves?
They may have to report to TDHCA.
Yeah, I bet they do.
And we can figure that out, yep.
That would be excellent to know, because one of the issues that we've had is, are those, are San Marcos people moving into there? Are we just bringing more people into San Marcos because we have that type of housing and our people are not being able to take advantage of that? I know y'all not going to be able to answer that one, so not asking for that.
But you hit the nail on the head.
But it would be good to know what those occupancy rates are. I suspect it's high occupancy, that there's not a lot of vacancies would be my guess, but I really don't know. So, okay, that would be helpful information. Okay, Ms. Prather.
Fascinating report, and I just want to thank all the effort over the many years that have been, and volunteers and subject matter experts that have put the amount of time and expertise into this report. Data-driven decisions are so important in government, and I think this is a big part of that regarding housing. I would love for this to come back to council for implementation and action, and just want to thank you all for all the work and effort. A lot of things I was reading here was just hitting the nail on the head on what we need to do for housing.
Well, this report's been around for quite a while. It's just not been finalized.
Yes.
And so I'm going to go around the table and ask these questions, and the first one and the main one is what Ms. Villalobos says, is do we want to go with the staff proposal to just make those minor updates that are, I'm going to say fairly easy? Because, you know, we've had a census, census thing has been hanging around, so we really need better numbers. And to start marking the data up, do what they can, and also any process items. Is everybody good with that? I'm looking for, Ms. Garza, are you good with that? I can just barely see the top of your head.
Uh, I honestly haven't gone back and looked at the P&amp;Z recommendations, but the staff is supportive of them.
I'm going to ask about the P&amp;Z recommendations next.
Oh, gotcha. I was going on the, based on like the little chart that I see right now.
Yeah, it's not on there.
Okay, so you're asking them separately. So the first one is like, okay, yes, the first one with what the minor staff changes, yes.
Let them do what they're proposing to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, of course, that has to come back to council, so we know that we're all good with that coming back. When do we want to address the P&amp;Z recommendations and any others that we might have? Because I've found a couple since then that are fairly simple to fix. So do we want to address those when it comes back to us? Is that, would that be the best for y'all to also? Okay, so we'll just address it when it comes back as we would have thought. Okay, so when it comes back, Ms. Garza, your hands are, your hand is up.
Yeah, so when do we anticipate it coming back? The reason I ask is because I think any changes to something that has been around for a minute and people, like, poured into, we should make sure that our neighbors know when it's happening. And then also, yeah, I just want to know like when we're planning on revisiting that.
Okay, but you're good with addressing the P&amp;Z recommendations at that time?
I mean, it depends when it's coming up, I guess.
I will have to ask the staff when they might be ready, because I'm not going to press anything on them that they're not ready to do.
Sure, so I don't think, I don't think it'll be coming back to you in August. That's a pretty quick turnaround.
I figured that.
It kind of sounds like, you know, at least the desire of Ms. Garza, and if city council wants to give us a thumbs up, we can do a blast out to the public. We can remind people that it's posted online with the red lines and do some of that PR, and maybe it comes back in two or three months instead of, you know, maybe three or four instead of one or two.
To have some time for that outreach, and I think that would be great. I think we probably all, yeah, the more input, the better, because it's been, it's been a while.
It has been a while, and we're happy to do that blast and get it out there and work with communications to make sure. work with communications to make sure that people know it's coming back, and give them a chance to read it with our edits.
And that's after y'all do your work, so people have something to, to look at and consider. The P&amp;Z recommendations will be in there.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, everything will be out there for, for folks to think about and comment on. Everybody, I, yeah. So, if it takes a little while to do all of that, I, I thought we would all be good with that, and, and we are. Ms. Garza, yeah, she's thumbs up, so...
Great, thank you.
Yes. So, I'm not even going to ask you at this point when it's coming back, because it also needs to be on an agenda, that we don't have 37 other things. So, I'm going to let staff figure how we, you know, we try to balance out these agendas. Okay. So, is, have I answered everything? I've got a couple other things. Well, we were good with the first one, so I think we're okay with everything. Everybody's good? Fabulous. Thank you so much. I'm so glad we have got this back up and running, and I'm glad to hear that eight of those nine peer cities have universities in them, or colleges, regardless of what size. So, that's extremely helpful and good to know. All right. Thank y'all for your work on that. Thanks for spending the time on the, the peer cities. And is there anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Trevino, take a deep breath, and if you will read item three for us, pause as you need.
Yes, ma'am. Executive session in accordance with the following. A, Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the pending application to discharge wastewater from the privately-operated Fleming Farms Wastewater Treatment Facility, proposed to be constructed 1.2 miles east of the intersection of Farm to Market 1978 and State Highway 123 in Guadalupe County, under the following case name and docket numbers. Application by Regal LLC for a new TBDES permit number WQ0015817001, TCEQ docket number 2020-0973, MWD SOAH docket number 582-21-0576, and the pending application to discharge wastewater from the privately-operated Rattler Ridge Wastewater Treatment Facility, proposed to be constructed approximately 7,656 feet southeast of the intersection from a farm to market road 1978 and State, State Highway 123 in Guadalupe County 78666, under the following case name and docket numbers. Application by Rattler Ridge LLC for a new TBDES permit number WQ0016049001, TCEQ docket number 2022-1046-MWD and SOAH docket number 582-23-07913. B, Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding a request for consent for the creation of an emergency services district to provide emergency medical services to certain areas of Caldwell County, including areas within the city of San Marcos. C, Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, personal matters to discuss appointee evaluations for the city manager, municipal court judge, city clerk, and city attorney.
All right. I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Scott, and let's vote.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mandosa.
Aye.
Mr. Prather. Okay, motion passes six to zero.
All right. Then, we will go into executive session at 4:33. Counsel, if you want to... Returned from our executive session, which we completed at 4, I'm sorry, 5:46. Next is our question and answer with press and public. Ms. Trevino, I believe we have Mr. Baker. Okay. Mr. Baker, the next three minutes is, oh, you're here!
Ta-da!
The next three minutes is still yours.
Great. Yes, so, y'all's work session was super interesting, and I, I believe my comments still stand about the person you hired and chose for that job, while they had some interesting insight. I think it would be good for you to reflect on the totality of the work. For instance, I thought it was interesting, he held up one example, and then said that a neighboring town had an increase in homelessness, saying that this city was successful, and yet, this one isn't. And it sounds like maybe those people just are moving to the other side, right? The other thing that I thought was really interesting is his focus on help, helping San Marcos residents first. And when he jumped into it, he said, "Oh, well, you could do things like use their, you know, did they go to high school here?" Right? These are all things that I think I could quote saying, "These are all things that you could just Google about somebody really quick. Did they go to high school here? Do they have a former utility bill that they can use?" Something, right, to prove that they're San Marcos residents first. And I understand the inclination to focus on that, but imagine applying that same policy or perspective to other services that the city of San Marcos provides, and I think you will find that it quickly fails to hold water. Plus, there were so many caveats to that of, "Well, if they suffered domestic violence, then still help them. Well, if there's still families, then still help them." Right? So, you carve out, you know, only help these people in San Marcos, residents, families, and people that have suffered domestic violence. And I think we would all agree, yes, let's, let's focus on those. Those should be, and veterans, I think, should also be included in that mix of, you know, when we talk about low-hanging fruit of who to serve with this, with these homeless needs. But I, I would want you all to ask, when this comes back to council, for more clarity on what social services he's encouraging you all to deny to people en masse in favor of, quote-unquote, "San Marcos residents", and really consider the barriers. Like, is he asking you all to discourage our food bank from providing food to homeless people?
Do you have a question, Mr. Baker?
I don't think that's up to you. This is my time, and I'm getting to my question. My question was to encourage you to ask this, right? Why are you interrupting me? The other thing that I thought was really interesting is, you know, he came in here and had all of these ideas that did not at all reference the survey, or the study that you all already paid for from Texas State, of which the main conclusion was to de-silo these nonprofits. So, do you all intend to work to de-silo nonprofits, instead of blindly following the recommendations of this, you know, arguably more conservative consultant that you've hired? And then, the other question I had is, it's mentioned in the report that they're not using HMIS, that it's not being used, and yet, we paid for all those licenses. We had nonprofits that were working in town, trying to utilize those services. So, where did that disconnect happen? Is it in part due to the poor relationships between some of our nonprofits and some of the city staff that we have noted complaints about?
Ms. Reyes, will all these items be addressed when y'all look at the report and see where and how implementation might occur?
I think we'll work together with Dr. Marbut to understand the implementation plan and, and ask the questions. I know we'll be vetting that with the homelessness committee, so any of the questions that come up, we'll definitely look at those and bring that back to the full council.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Trevino, did we have anyone else? Okay. In that case, if you would read, I'm sorry. No, that's for later. At this point, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Scott.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Mandosa. Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Then, I will adjourn us at 5:51.